Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's agenda? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for the May 12 council meeting, approval of our April financial report. We have a resolution for employment from Park and Rec, approval of liquor licenses from Logolize Store and the Walton Club, and claims in the amount of $131,737.44.
I have a question about the financial report.
Yes.
The deficits on solid waste, the capital projects and general fund, why would those be?
Solid waste has been in the red for years.
But it's getting fixed.
Building that back up.
Yeah, we're building it back up. It's eventually going to be back in the black again. The capital projects, there's a lot of expenditures for the sewer, and we need to do drawdowns to get that money back.
And what about the general fund?
It's just sad.
Receipts. We're still not, those aren't still reflecting receipts from the tax, property taxes.
It's coming back up too, but yeah.
And...
Yeah, it'll, we'll get more.
Generally, at this time of the year, you're going to see it at its lowest point simply because of that. So next report for May will be, will be in the black.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, and then Joy, on those drawdowns, I know it was Melanie, those are, do you have a report on those, Melanie?
Last month, we applied for around 700, or we submitted the request for around 700,000. The city just hasn't gotten the money in return yet.
Okay, thank you. So entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, or moved by Revulinski.
And I'll second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I have to say aye, but abstain from the resolution for employment at the Park and Rec Department.
Understood. Counsel, then, next we'll move to our public appearances. We have Dick DeAngelis from the Sofia Organization, just a few weeks away from All Things Italian 2014. Dick, join us.
I think my time's up, just walking up.
No, you got time, just go.
I, I've come before you for two reasons. First of all, the All Things Italian, Fairfield's All Things Italian Street Festival is Saturday, June 14th. We are expecting more entertainment and food and activities, and also close to 200 volunteers to help us out for, to make a fabulous evening while Fairfield's largest single night event of the year. I have before you two requests. One is one that we tabled from last meeting for the $2,000.
That's correct. Yeah, Joy, she was going to do a review on the, on the reserve balance for local option sales tax for that, to report to the council. So she said it looks good.
Yeah, yeah, there is, we, yeah, there's some leftover from last year.
I really apologize to the board that we were delayed due to some miscommunication, but it won't happen again, and I hope that you can improve that. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about is the street closings, and see if I can answer any questions. I did discuss it with Chief here, and did discuss it with several businesses, and I'm just, I'm talking to more of them just to let them know what we're planning, because we are planning on closing all the streets eventually. But we are really sensitive to the fact that businesses want to do business, and that's one of the reasons we're having the festival on Saturday, to encourage that. So I think we have a good plan in front of you. If I have, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Now, the closings in areas that you requested are similar to what you did last year, or what you've requested in the past?
Yes.
Or is there some changes? Yeah, go ahead, have a seat.
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
So sorry. They are to, except for one thing. We are, what we've done a couple of years before, when we had a lot of street performers, we felt it was the only safe thing to do, is once the festival started, to close the traffic from past top of the rock there. They can go down, they can go down that alleyway if they need to, and then closed off there, going past Revelations and so on on that little side street, because there'll be entertainers all the way through there, and all the way up to Revelations. And we just, we had at one time where we did have a lot of street performers, and there were cars coming through, and it was considered really unsafe. So that's what we'll do, and then we'll open the pack up as soon as, as soon as things are over.
All right. So, a question to Joy. The local option sales tax money is from the current fiscal year? It's not from?
It'll have to come from what's in the reserves, because we've spent all that we've budgeted for this year. But we do have a little bit in reserves.
Okay, all right. I would like to approve both requests for the money from the local option sales tax for $2,000, and for the street closing for the event.
Second.
Darren, motion by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, thanks, Dick.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have represented from Jefferson County Fair. Also in, in June, we'll be enjoying our parade, and we're going to go over the parade route. Good evening. Hard to believe a year's passed again.
Yeah, it is. Long and cold, man. We're basically the same route we had, up Broadway to Main. It's back down on Briggs, so.
Okay.
You want to tell them what day, Dennis?
June 24th, Tuesday at 6:30.
Wow, coming up, big hurry.
Yeah.
So there is early this year.
Yeah, yes, force. We'll be down before four.
Yeah.
In fact, our last day will be the 30th, so sale cleanup will be the 30th, so.
Okay, well, counsel, very important to get our parade starting the Jefferson County Fair. Entertained a motion to approve the request.
Oh, made. Second.
Moved by Hammuss, second by Revulinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thanks very much.
Thank you, guys.
Hope we have great weather for you.
Yeah, we'll see you next year.
Okay, next we have requests from, for the Heartland Rod and Cusip Shop. Andy? Hard to believe another year's passed for that tour.
I haven't done it in a while.
That's true.
This is for the Fairfield's 175th Celebration for the Parade on Saturday, first. We wanted to do the same parade route that the Quandals Day Parade does. That way, when we do a parade, it's the same takeoff. So it'll leave from the high school at, at 2:00 in the afternoon, line up at noon, and each of the parade entries will have a number with the idea that they'll come up to the square, and they'll get an announcement based on what their entry is. And then they'll just follow the same parade route that the Quandals Parade Route does. And then, we're looking for businesses to enter in the, in the parade, as well as open it up to kids and bicycles with the patriotic theme since it's 4th of July. And the parade registrations are available here at City Hall on the Facebook page for 175th. Any questions about parade route or how we're doing that?
What time of day, again, is that?
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
And after the parade, immediately everything goes out to waterworks for the festivities out there, and then on to fireworks.
Got it.
You're talking about 4th of July parade?
Well, 5th of July, I'm sorry. Saturday.
5th of July, Saturday, yeah.
Does Art Walkers.
That'll be the celebration day for the 175th.
Right.
Right.
I had a question about why registration?
Well, we want, more for just a number type of thing. We've seen, I've seen some parades where they, since it's the 175th birthday, and if we get businesses that have stuff that's of antique nature from the past of Fairfield, the announcement table can announce what's, what's going across on the parade float. So more than, you know, the going by and not knowing what's going by on a flatbed or whatever.
Parade view stand, right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that was the only reason for doing it. Other than that, there is no point for numbers for registration.
Okay. Well, and you got a whole new section of parking lot to be able to park things at the high school now, too.
Yeah, and I've already talked to Fred McKelvey about it, so we've got authorization to use all the parking lot, so.
I would move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, thanks, Andy.
The second part is the car show on Sunday.
Yep.
We're just looking at blocking off Main, Broadway and Court up till, not taking the full stance that the car shows used to take, where you took all the way to Briggs, and then putting the barricades across the intersections so that less of the traffic from Red Rock swing around to Revelations.
Okay.
Same thing.
Internal part of the square.
Right.
Northeast and west, yeah.
And we'd probably block that off at 8:00 AM, and then be done by 6:00 PM. We're also having a concert in the gazebo around 1:00 in the afternoon, so the idea is to bring people up for like one, one last event to celebrate the 175th.
That sounds like a good idea. Counsel, motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, thanks, Andy.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. And finally, for our street closings, with summer reading program, Fairfield Library.
Hi.
Hello.
So, what we were hoping to do is to just put up sort of a blockade on Main, just to sort of keep people from moving down Main, because we've been in touch with the police department, and they have kindly said they will provide us with a squad car, or a police car, to, for kids to explore. But so then we'd have kids going back and forth to the alley. So if we could...
The alley was going to be blocked off, not Main Street.
Not Main Street, no, that...
Oh, no, I'm so sorry.
It was the alley.
That's Highway 1.
So we don't get ourselves in problems. Agencies, I think we need to rephrase that.
Fun mistake. Adams, we were hoping to block off. So that way, docks in could still have access to their parking. We would want to set up the block on the other side so that people could still park at docks, and then could still use the library parking, and then if necessary, the police car could leave by going down Adams. So mainly just set up a block between the alley and the parking at docks.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
This is on June 7th.
June 7th, okay.
Yes.
Very good.
Coming up in a hurry. I would approve that plan.
Okay, motion by Hamilton to approve the request.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, counsel, we have two requests for tax abatements on new, new home construction. First one is that 2253 Lakeview, or I'm sorry, Walton Lake Drive. And, let's see. Again, this is for residential tax abatement. That would be up to the first $75,000 value of the home, and it's a three-year program. So entertain a motion to approve this tax abatement request.
So moved.
Moved by Hammuss?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Okay, our next request is coming from 303 South 17th Street, again, for residential tax abatement.
Is that remodeled, or what is that?
It says new modular home on a basement.
Yeah, the owner's here, Don Holting. Don, can you tell us about the residence?
Sure.
Sure.
It is a two-bedroom, one-mat modular home, excuse me, on a basement. It's at 303 South 17th. Has a deck in the back and a covered porch on the front.
It's a modular home, prefabricated home, but a, but a frame, but basically a freestanding home on a...
Yes, yeah.
On a pad, okay.
And it's a newly erected there?
Yes.
Newly set there, okay.
It's not a manufactured home, which sometimes people confuse modulators with manufactured. It's not that.
Right, thanks. Motion to approve by Hammuss?
Second.
Second by Revulinski. Please call the roll.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, counsel, we have our annual budget amendment for this, this past fiscal year, 1314, reviewing where, where we are at this point in time, how revenues and expenditures have kind of stacked up. Joy, I know there probably some things we want to point out in, in that area. Big part of our capital projects, obviously, $3 million that we had budgeted in for our pool and rec project that was not spent in this year, so.
Right, yeah, and the revenues. We had budgeted to get a fire truck. We were hoping to get a grant for the fire truck. That did not come. So that's the 255 that we did not receive. Same way of the expenditures, the 320 in public safety. We thought we would be spending it for a fire truck, and we're not. So, the capital projects is the money that we thought we'd be spending on the park and rec project, the pool, indoor pool, or outdoor pool and indoor gym. And we, yep, not going to do it this year, so. That's the reason for those differences.
And then outside of those two elements, there were some other increases in some revenues, some, also some increases in some expenditures. Any questions? And entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for 201314.
So moved.
Moved by Revulinski?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we'd like a resolution to accept a land gift from the Greater Jefferson County Foundation. And it sounds like John has some...
Let me explain what's going on here.
Okay.
Since 1964, the Obie Nelson Park Grounds have in part been owned by a nonprofit corporation rather than the city, but the city's always used it. That corporation recently went out of existence. Its perpetual existence ended after 50 years. And they transferred their assets to the Greater Jefferson County Foundation, who immediately felt this property should be available to the city for use in your skate park area. It would have also encompassed park, pool area, and so forth. So it's important that you accept this. That's all this is about, the description has worked out with the assessors, so.
John, so there's nothing new added to the park? It's just simply changing ownership?
No, this is just actually cleaning up some old title issues.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Yeah, we definitely want that in our control, it's poignant.
I'll make a motion to accept the gift.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Hammuss?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we have approval of a 28E agreement with the school district regarding services, joint services with parks and recreation. And this was recommended by the CAT Advisory Board. In our last presentation to them about our, our two projects, they would like to see something solidified, codified, between the two entities to assure that the participation of the school is at, is at its strongest level. So doing it through a 28E agreement, again, it would be, as you can see, along with in-kind, there are some shared services that would help with custodial and refinishing, shared equipment, those types of things. But this is one important part of our checklist that we would need to get to the CAT Board by our next meeting to move that grant process along.
Is the school board, you teach this?
John, has the school, pardon me?
They have approved it?
They have, they did approve it. Okay. Very good, so then this would finish that. We could report to the, to the CAT Board tomorrow, that we have that done, so that they would have it in their packet for our June 11th presentation to them.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Howley to approve the 28E agreement?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Howley?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, counsel, we have, let's say, another deed transfer. John, are you going to comment on this as well?
Yeah. This isn't a gift.
No.
This is needed to be able to complete the paving project down by Pilot Road Savings Bank. Basically, we're going to receive a strip of property that's about a inch of street that will run along the side of that area. It will, by us going ahead with doing the project, it will also benefit the grantor here, who's giving you the deed. You just have to be executed in the last 24 hours, so. The resolution wasn't on your tablet. I apologize for that. Becca and I weren't sure whether we were having a permanent right-of-way agreement or a deed. So we got that put together late afternoon. But anyway, it's very necessary to the decent and paid project.
So, John, is this essentially right-of-way that we're, we're talking about? Are we acquiring this to...
Well, it's being used for public road right-of-way and road uses, is the way to phrase it. It's being transferred to us for a public purpose by a full deed.
Okay.
We could have taken it by a right-of-way, but the grantor was agreeable to do a full deed, so that's probably best for you.
I move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Revulinski to approve, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have an easement, pardon? Easement agreement, and John, are you going to address us on that as well?
Yeah, this, this is for a small triangular piece at one end of the pavement project, plus a 10-foot wide temporary construction easement, which will expire after six months. It'll get us through the building season, and then we'll have a small corner, it's only about 120 square feet. After that, it's attached as far as what your plat sketches of what's being conveyed. And essentially, this has been negotiated back and forth with Bob Daniels, who was Ferris Properties L.C., and he's helping us make sure we've got everything we need for the street.
Okay, thank you, John. So any other, any questions on this? Obviously, another important piece of property for that project. Entertained a motion to approve the resolution, accepting the easement. Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Okay, next, I'd like to invite Travis Squires. We're going to take a look at a couple of points about moving our bonding along in the next month. So Travis, if you'd talk to us about the disclosure for issuing notes.
Yeah, no problem. If you don't mind, Mayor, I would go through the, is it all right if we go through a packet first, just kind of review the financing, and then kind of come back and do both items?
Absolutely.
Okay. The way they understand the money. So did provide a packet of information. I kind of, you're going to move through relatively quickly, but at the last meeting, it was asked to provide illustrations regarding the ability of some of the new properties to support what is targeted as to be a TIF payment on a portion of the general obligation bond. So I'll go ahead and walk through what those areas look like, and what the underlying schedules. Kind of review a timeline, what we have, financing components as far as the frontage road, Highway 1. A second piece that's been kind of talked about was sidewalks and safety measures at the rec site, as well as reimbursement for the land purchase, as possibly being a TIF-supported item as well. So it would not go on the debt service levy, it would be supported by TIF. And then, obviously, the swimming pool, indoor rec facility, the part of the referendum that's already been budgeted for as part of the fiscal year 15 budget, as far as the tax rate implication. So we would just fit within that repayment. We'll walk through what the term sheet would look like. That'll go to the banks, be very similar to the one that went out last year. Then you have two action items. One is just acknowledging the disclosure required for issuing notes. It's just a very, as our role as placement agent, we are required to provide you with adequate disclosures. It's a lot of interesting reading. It talks about your, your risk is, when you're issuing and what you're pledging as far as general obligation debt. The other thing would be just approving the form of term sheet, so we have counsel's authorization to go ahead and begin speaking with investors. From there, any comments, questions, we can deal with those as we go. So, so one quick thing on, kind of going through the timeline. You know, there's been a few calls that have happened since the last meeting, kind of ironed out a few different things. I believe we're still waiting on some work to be done I believe we're still waiting on some work to be done by your urban renewal planner to provide you with amendments for the updating plan. One thing that's new, as part of the TIF legislation that was passed last year, is any new project requires an amendment to your urban renewal plan. So, even though you might have specified specifically in your urban renewal area what you are planning to do, you are required to do an amendment with every new project. So, we'll be dealing with that probably at your next council meeting would be the target date for that. We also had a due diligence call just between kind of what I'd call members of the financing team, your bond attorney was on, as well as Mayor and Joy, as well as, right now, your project engineer. So, sort of walking through some of the questions as far as understanding what needs to be answered in order to get this financing complete. We're still targeting trying to get it closed by the end of this fiscal year. It provides you with two things, obviously puts you in a little bit better cash position as well, closing up the fiscal year. Last Friday, you see the yellow highlighted, you did receive the draft audit, which will require comments still. So, not everything's hammered out, but it does kind of allow us to kind of kickstart and start moving towards looking at financing. From here, you have a couple of different items for approval tonight, kind of just marching through. Our plan will be to circulate preliminary bonding information to the financing team tomorrow, and then later this week, convene another call, hopefully to have bids due from investors a little over two and a half weeks from today. From there, you'll be able to have council authorization to a final approval on the 23rd of June, so just about a month from today, and then closing still yet this fiscal year. I'm not going to say that your bond attorney has completely bought off on this schedule yet, so there may be the need to throw in a special meeting, but we'll kind of keep you abreast of that. If there needs to be a short special meeting, we'll make certain that we coordinate with everyone's schedule. Right now, the anticipated amount is 3.7 million on the issuance. I'm going to walk through kind of what I view as the three components. So, we've been tasked at looking at them, and this is just a TIF revenue statement. Long story short, we're looking at two different properties and estimates that were shared at your meeting about a month ago regarding Pilot Grove, what we view as a very conservative estimate of that valuation, and then Casey's. So, those two properties fall within your Highway 34 TIF area. So, therefore, they would be eligible for tax increment financing. So, in other words, you could capture the taxes to use to repay for the infrastructure improvements that you're doing. So, with that 1.375 million valuation, you would generate about 47,000 of tax increment financing revenues. So, we'd take that revenue stream and try to make certain that any payments would fit within that stream. So, therefore, it's not having a tax levy in that. So, obviously, if there's any growth, you know, you could pay it off more quickly. Conversely, we're not taking into account anything that's already generated within the TIF area. So, therefore, once your rebate is done, that rebate obligation you currently have, those revenues could also be used to pay off this debt. The following page then is just a real simple summary. In my mind, it's simple, obviously not real simple, but if you look at the top right, Frontage Road, South Highway 1, that's the title of the project. By the time you take your bid, contingency, engineering costs, and allocation of cost of issuance, you're looking at about 420,000 to finish up that project. Obviously, that would be the borrowing amount, any surplus can be used to repay the debt. One thing that should be noted on here is with any new tax increment financing project or any new property, while the valuations will not be on the books until January 1 of 14, which means you will not start receiving revenues for that property until fiscal 17. So, during that gap period, we are fitting that within your debt service levy. So, there is a small component of interest, about $12,000 over two years, that will fall on the debt service levy. I just wanted you to be aware of that. We're sizing that right now, so it's not an additional increase over and above. Right now, we do anticipate your overall rates on the swimming pool portion to come in a little bit lower to be able to cover that. The following page, page six, then, talks about supporting a similar project. This is what Community First Credit Union, this valuation is a little more concrete. It will be anticipated to be on the books about at 981,000, generates about 33,000 per year. Again, this is again a TIF area that you guys put into place a couple of years ago. You have revenues that will be generated in that area at roughly 33,000 per year. The total obligation that you're looking to cover is about 270,000. And that includes sidewalks and safety measures at the site, as well as the land purchase. Again, this is again tied completely to the TIF area, so therefore, no tax increase or tax levy rate increase associated with this portion of the project. So, what you have right now is the first two components being supported almost entirely by TIF outside of a year and a half of interest and stuff.
Sorry, Travis, remind me, what is the Community First Building TIF paying for again? We were going to do that development behind Walmart, but then I thought we're not doing it.
What we're proposing is that we cover the cost of the land purchase at the Whitney property, 210,000 plus, an estimate of what, nearly about nine, for sidewalks on the site to ensure the greatest safety.
Yeah, 50,000.
On the rec side.
Yeah.
Primarily the intersection with Ninth, improving that for the pedestrians.
Yeah, with the movement of the site, they're looking at additional safety improvements that might be necessary.
Right, okay. Okay, I'm with you, thank you.
The final component then will be your swimming pool bonds. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time walking through here. If you look in columns three and four on page eight, what you have here is your repayment on the swimming pool bond. So, this is the portion that you talked about beyond the debt service levy. This is what was voted, I'm losing track of dates. So, this is back in the fall of 2012, that was approved by the citizens. At that time, the tax levy rate increase, it's now illustrated in here, and you can see roughly 190,000 will be your principal payment in this first year, then you'll cover about 114,000 of interest. That 114,000 of interest is inclusive of the prior interest that I showed would be coming from the debt service levy. So, that fits within your payment. You set a pre-levy or an amount not to exceed in this fiscal year of 309,000 for this issue. So, we'll be making sure that we solve within that parameter, so that there's not any additional increase or shortfall. One thing that we've talked about is the ability to structure your debt to give you a little bit of flexibility down the road. If you look at column 11, that column simply illustrates your ongoing levy rate based on your current obligations in the planned swimming pool. So, you can see your levy rate dropping from 449 to 417 to 375, stays there for a year, and you can see it's slowly starting to work its way down. Obviously, it's anticipated the city will continue to do street improvements and various projects as you go, but this is kind of the backdrop that we're working through your capital improvement planning process on, make certain that we're not going to see any additional increases over and above what you have issued. So, we've been structuring your debt and making sure all future debt, within reason, will fit within that existing levy structure, so that your citizens and patrons of your community are not surprised by additional tax rate increases to just cover ongoing capital needs. If you were to completely shut off the capital flow of doing any improvements in the city, obviously, you'd see tax rate decreases over time, but obviously, as you know, streets need improved, equipment needs to be purchased, so we'll be looking to kind of fit those within the current rate levy structure.
And that's inclusive, Travis, of other debt services that we have on right now?
Yep, your other debt.
Are some of those drops related to when those issues would finish?
Yep, if you look at column eight, that's your existing debt that is remaining.
So, 2022 is the year.
When it's all over. Your existing debt's all over.
And we won't borrow any more money up to that point, I can tell.
Exactly. You know, one thing that should be pointed out, and I did include this, I didn't originally include the next page, page nine, but this page simply illustrates the what-if scenario. This is, you know, as we're moving forward, the proposal is to issue these, the entire debt is general obligation debt. So, while the plan is for the TIF to support that debt, I wanted to provide you with an illustration of what happens if the TIF can't support the debt. I think that's important, while I think it's a remote opportunity, I think it is something that should be considered by the council. So, what I've done here in columns three through seven is I've given you that first, what I call Pilot Grove or the Frontage Road project. So, you can see the payment schedule, the 420,000, you see what I call a gross rate. So, this would be if there was no abatement or utilization of TIF revenues to buy down the levy rate. So, you can see you settle in rated about 14 cents per year out through 20, from fiscal 17 out to fiscal 28. That's an additional 14 cents. With the utilization of the TIF revenues, you're able to take that down to zero. Again, same analysis with what I'm calling the rec site.
So, worst case?
Yep, worst case.
Worst case.
So, what I'm showing with the rec site, then, same analysis, it's just under 10 cents. So, the maximum would be rated around 25 cents. However, from what I understand, there have been pretty conservative illustrations used as far as valuations. And remember, we did have built into there the natural drop in the levy rate. So, it might just simply require we need to revisit what's on the future capital improvement list. Again, I don't think this is an issue, but I think it's probably a new disclosure that I, you know, I think you guys should be aware of.
Appreciate that.
The next piece I'll walk through quick is the Formulary Loan Fissment Package. This is the term sheet that would go out. There's a few pages in this packet, a lot of it is pretty well set. It outlines the terms, purposes, the estimated closing date, which obviously might change. The call feature is probably one thing that I want you to be aware of. On a typical 20-year bond issue, we would normally see a 10-year call feature about halfway through the schedule. We are requesting that we push that up to at least eight years, to give you a little bit of flexibility in the instance that you do need, for example, to restructure debt or rates remain low, you may be able to refinance. Or, if TIF revenues could support it, you might be able to prepay your debt early as well. Again, that's just an option, and I think that you will not see any sort of rate penalty for an eight-year call versus a 10-year call. We've been seeing those a lot standard on 20-year issues. The source of security for this loan is secured by the continual property tax levied against all property of the city. The repayment source, though, you are intending to repay it out of your debt service levy with the potential for utilization of tax increment financing revenues available. Other covenants, at this time, we're not anticipating anything, but a bidder or potential bank purchaser, investor could choose to add other covenants, and those will be evaluated both by us and your legal counsel, and then we will report recommendations on how to handle any of those other covenants. Your estimated principal repayment schedule is shown in on the following page, you see it under table one, the total of 3.69 million is anticipated. Overall, that's all I wanted to go through on the term sheet, it's very straightforward, there's not a lot of complexity to it. But, part of the private placement or the direct purchaser method is that the direct purchaser is going to sign off that they have done adequate due diligence, they're a sophisticated investor capable of understanding the credit quality of the city. So, we anticipate to get that letter, they're responsible for the due diligence, you have a more limited obligation as far as what needs to be disclosed. We will provide them with your most recent audits. I anticipate there will be some back and forth conversation about the changes from over here, but nothing that I don't anticipate will be something that we can manage. So, like I said, kind of circling back to your items tonight, you do have a disclosure item, this is not set forth, any sort of fees, it's just a regulatory disclosure. It specifies that in our role as placement agent, that we're required to deal fairly at all times with both the municipal issuer, yourself, City of Fairfield, as well as the investors that the loans are being placed with. So, we do have that dual role in dealing fairly with all parties involved. We do not have a fiduciary duty under this, as we cannot, if we're dealing directly, communicating directly with investors, we're prohibited from having a fiduciary duty to both sides of the party. So, for compensation, we'll be paid what's called a placement agent fee, similar to the way that last year's issuance was. Are there any questions on either this disclosure which provided ahead of time, or the term sheet which you just did receive tonight? So, if you do want to walk through any other questions, that's fine. So, at this time, I'll take any questions, comments, concerns, or dialogue.
Counsel? So, I think we'll go ahead, thanks Travis, you did very comprehensive, and I think the documents you provided really tell the story. There seems to be good security in the properties that we have that are going to create the tax increment, projects are strong, and we have a good sense of the estimates of what they're going to cost, so we could see that that's going to fit in to our debt schedule. So, the first piece of business, counsel, would be to approve the disclosure, which essentially is authorizing Piper Jaffray as our agent in representing to both us and to our potential investors, the information about the term sheet. Entertain a motion then to approve the disclosure letter?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kalin?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. And then the next would be the term sheet, and again, Travis did go over those different elements. Any questions, counsel, about those areas that are covered in the term sheet? If not, entertain a motion to approve the term sheet. Moved by Revulinski?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. So, Travis, will you follow up with Ehlers Cooley and John also, keep John on the loop on that as well, in terms of the amendments that we need to our urban renewal districts, so we can keep this moving forward and hopefully be closing this in about a month from now?
Yep. The one thing I would add is, on our last call, there was a little bit of dialogue about the further potential, about consolidating some of the urban renewal areas, provide the city with a little bit more flexibility. We've not moved really in any direction there.
Yeah.
But it will be something that might be explored, and essentially, what that would allow you to do would be to look at the total revenues that are generated within the entire urban renewal areas of the city. And then, if necessary or applicable, use revenues in separate areas to support your ongoing infrastructure development.
John, so?
We've seen a lot of cities move towards this model of managing the urban renewal areas. In a sense, you end up with one urban renewal area plan, so that you're not modifying one plan and modifying another plan and seeing where they overlap. Essentially, you have one connected district at that point in time. So, I'm not saying that we have a firm recommendation either way, but it would provide the city with more flexibility.
Well, not only flexibility, but I think, you know, security in the collective projects that you're funding, as opposed to tying them to particular areas. If you can unify all of these different districts, then if that South Main portion is performing a lot better than, you know, the West Burlington, then you can draw on both, you can draw on one revenue pool.
You can do that after the fact.
Well, that's, yeah, just by unifying our district for urban renewal districts, consolidating them into one district for the whole city.
Yeah, so each individual property, for example, of a Community First building, that is an amendment, that amendment, well, it's the initial part of the plan, but that initial part of the plan sets off your clock on that property. So, you can't extend the clock in any of the properties, just like your prior properties. If you're five years in, you're still limited to the 15-year total. So, you have to keep track of each individual clock, but you have one urban renewal plan for each of those.
Okay, thanks Travis. So, yeah, that would be something we would want to, I believe, we'd want to pursue that as well, if it's something that can take place during our amendment process, we would like to see that, so.
And there's a chance it might not be able to move as quickly as these other amendments probably need to move, but it can easily be added on.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks very much, thanks for coming down tonight, appreciate it. Next council, we have an amendment to our wastewater conveyance agreement with French Redeker Melanie, can you address that for us?
Darren, speak up at any time. Both this and your next item went to the committee prior to this, but this amendment is for our step one contract, which is from the plant to Lamson Woods, the conveyance system. And this cleans up some paperwork on two different issues. The first is a flood analysis, or what we identify as a HECC RAS analysis for Crow Creek. And in the preliminary design of step two, we realized that the sanitary sewer crossing of Crow Creek near Highway 34 dictated the elevation of the sanitary sewer all the way to the plant. So, what we looked into is raising that elevation, or raising the flow line of Crow Creek, so that we could essentially raise the elevation of the sewer, saving digging depth all the way to the plant, or roughly 6,000. way to the plant, or roughly 6,000 feet worth. So we discussed with Darren early on, Darren and Sean, would you like us to look into this further? And they agreed. So this cleans up that contract language. We did submit the analysis to DNR. We're expecting to hear from them around the 1st of July. It won't make any changes at the plant. We've been coordinated with McClure, assuming the worst-case scenario. But if it does get approved by DNR, it would raise, it would shallow the digging depth by two feet for that 6,000 feet. So that was an add-on to the contract with this amendment. It's highlighted under Items One and Two, or Paragraphes One and Two. Then also in this amendment is a subtraction from the engineering costs. And this is related to the sponsored projects. Our original agreement included the design of the sponsored project associated with just the conveyance system. And as we got working in through things, we realized we could also utilize the money from the wastewater treatment plant. We worked with McClure, you know, to divvy up responsibilities, and we did include the plant in the application, which was recommended for approval by the DNR a couple weeks ago. The EPC still needs to officially vote on it in June, but, you know, fingers crossed that the city will receive that $2 million. As far as reimbursement, it cleans it up in that the design is a separate contract. So this amendment is basically cleaning up some work that's been done, and, but it comes to a net decrease of $32,450.
Right. It brings our previous agreement of $840,500 down to $808,500.
That's good.
So we have a decrease, Joe.
That's unusual trend. Welcome. That's a welcome trend.
The committee reviewed this with Melanie earlier and had voted to accept this change in agreement. And I'm certain that it's going to help us use some money in other areas that we hadn't planned on.
Good, very good. So they'll take that as a motion to approve the amendment to the engineering services agreement by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Revelinsky. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thanks, Melanie.
The next item is for the engineering of the Step Two conveyance. This takes you from Lambs and Woods around the east side of the city and to MUM. It also includes a branch through the golf course and up to Forest Park. Roughly, right now, you have around four miles of sewer between those points. We're looking at combining those two pipes into one larger pipe and also include capacity for the inflow and infiltration, but roughly cutting the amount of sewer in that area in half. So rather than four miles to maintain, you're looking more at two miles to maintain. This agreement is for what I would call the final design. Preliminary design was done with our earlier contract. That's how we discovered where the hinge points were. This would be final design, including detailed surveying, checking to make sure houses can all get served with the new location, environmental assessment, the final plans, bid letting. This contract also includes engineering during construction. We're assuming roughly 400 days of onsite availability. We're looking at this contract being able to break, being broken into four separate contracts, roughly $2 million apiece on the construction side because of, there are some independent areas. Hopefully, this opens up the window to some more local contractors that have a bonding capacity closer to that range. And it's also smaller pipe than the Step One stuff that our local contractors have more experience with. So this includes preparing four sets of construction documents to help with that local preference. So this comes to the engineering. The design portion is $418,000, shown on Page Four. The engineering during construction is a budget of $565,000 for a total of $983,000 for the Step Two.
Again, this came before the committee, prior to this meeting, and we feel that we should approve it, so I would move to approve.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton to approve the engineering services agreement for Step Two of the wastewater conveyance.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thanks, Melanie. And we have a soil borrowings agreement for the Step Two as well?
I'd like to address that.
Sure, go ahead.
Through discussion that we had at the meeting prior to the council meeting this evening, it was determined that we would like to set this agreement aside for the moment and then ask for further input on, from other soil companies for doing this work. And until we find out what those numbers are, we don't want to approve this agreement.
Okay. What would our schedule be for trying to complete these, to keep project moving forward?
You can answer that one, Melanie.
I would, I think, and I guess we didn't discuss this on the committee level, not before your next council meeting, but definitely within the following one. So in four weeks, I should have something back that you can discuss on the committee level. We'll bring it back to the council. I'll work as fast as I can, and maybe we can get it in two weeks, but, you know, summer, everyone's busy with construction jobs. But hopefully, within four weeks, we can keep this moving.
So you're looking at...
It may take us four weeks to get permission from the landowners to get on...
You're looking at June 23rd council meeting?
Yes.
Before the approval?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Melanie. Okay, next, counsel, we'll move down to our committee reports. We'll start with Ways and Means Committee.
Ways and Means met last Monday. We considered the proposed service agreement with French Renneker to offer the services of Melanie Carlson to manage our city projects and move a city administrator, or until, if and until we get a city administrator. We had several issues with the agreement. It was considered by the Personnel Committee prior to this, and Personnel Committee was in favor of it. We did discuss, you know, raised questions around about the duration of it, the scope of it. It was a one-year proposal and with a two-week termination clause. You know, there was sort of thinking, you know, the scope, meaning, you know, what exactly is being done now and what would already, under the current agreements with French Renneker with Melanie, and what would be unique? And looking at that, there were some unique things that she would do, but then there was discussion, well, you know, about actually how much time would that require? The agreement calls for basically a halftime position. In the end, the committee was favorable towards it, but the mayor had some kind of recent developments on this. Did you want to state it about that?
About the hours?
Yeah, the 15 hours versus 20.
Well, I think, yeah, and I think we've got that in front of us. The original proposal was for 20 hours per week, and, you know, Joy and I just kind of, we'd had several discussions about what we thought would fall into that area outside of the engineering work that French Renneker is already doing for us, and where we would have some outside management hours. And we felt that 20 was maybe just a little bit on the high side, so we recommended 15 hours. Obviously, if there is more to that, there is a mechanism for French Renneker to, you know, to bill us as they have when we have assigned them to those projects, but for the contract's purposes, we recommended 15 hours per week. And, you know, the, I think one of the questions to, that came up first, or one of the explanations about why we're taking this path, is that it offers us the opportunity to continue with a lot of very important things that are going on right now with a continuity, as opposed to, you know, waiting and interrupting that flow with a hiring process and bringing somebody new on and bringing them up to speed on a learning curve. We felt comfortable enough to manage what we have going on with some outside assistance for, you know, a period of time. We're also going to recommend to the Personnel Committee, as far as timeline, to begin an executive search for a new administrator in the early fall, so that that process would start. We could potentially have somebody hired by the period of time where we are no longer paying for the services or our last city administrator, so that budgets would open up a little bit at that time as well. And we would just be beginning to plan for the next year's budget, and it would probably be a good time to introduce someone. So that's the logic behind doing it this way, continue for some time. The contract is for one year, but I think in polling the council, I don't know if there's a comfort level to allow it to go that long, so I think the recommendation would be to couple this with an executive search that would begin, say, in September, which means this contract could run, say, through the end of the year, or maybe through the end of November. That's just kind of the logic. I mean, Melanie, if, I've said this in some of our other meetings as well, if it wasn't Melanie, I don't know whether we would be as involved. She's been very engaged with a lot of the project we have. She's got a lot of knowledge about where we are in the process with a lot of these things, and I think would bring value to the continuity of being able to manage some more projects. So that's kind of the logic, the rationale that's gotten us to this point.
So we don't have this service agreement in front of us, or the amendments to it that are proposed here tonight, so I don't, what?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
We do. That's in this agreement. The hours in the renumeration area of Section Two...
Oh, their next section.
They've been amended, yeah.
Right, the resolution. Okay, good, good. So it is here.
And it's also, it's also good to point out that this is not an agreement between the city and Melanie Carlson. This is an agreement between the city and French Renneker, and that payments would be made to French Renneker rather than directly to Melanie as an employee of the city.
Right. Yeah, and French Renneker wishes to maintain Melanie as employee, and so that's, and obviously there's some savings there in terms of the benefits that the city would not have to pay for an employee at this point. Of course, we could do it as a dependent contractor, but anyway, this would be the same. We're also at the rate that this is projected at right now. We are getting a reduced rate from what the hourly billing would be if we were just contracting with her independently for hours. But this is the first opportunity we've had a chance to really get it before the full council, so we obviously wanted to get everyone's impressions about, you know, taking this direction at this time.
So essentially, do I understand correctly in that Melanie's main responsibilities will be the projects which we currently have underway, that she has been involved with in terms of, you know, the opportunity for her to continue in those, but not in, basically, she's not going to be involved in, I guess I would just say, the day-to-day operations within the city, other than within those projects?
No, she would, Martha. It would be outside of those. So for instance...
I mean, if there's a crisis, do they call Melanie, you know, regardless, or, you know, where is this line?
Yeah, it's not so much from a Personnel administrative standpoint, no. But for instance, we have this facade restoration grant that we're going to be working on that would have come through our city administrator. That's a process that we're going to get started. That isn't something that is going to need engineering work per se, but will need some task management from the city side. We have, the skate park falls into that same kind of a category also. You know, we have a donor, we have a firm that's been contracted, but there's going to need to be liaison with the city. We need somebody to be available to manage projects like that. So I think there are going to be projects that are outside of the scope of the engineering contracts that we have with French Renneker.
I see.
So they would be outside, but not necessarily day-to-day dealing with, you know...
So she's not going to necessarily be the person to work with, our department heads, and some of those...
If there's something that's needed, yes, but I think that'll be determined among the department heads, and I think it'll also...
It's more of a case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case basis.
On tragedies, but not somewhat like on Personnel or something?
Yeah. I would, you know, I would say between Joy and I, we can make a determination as to what we would, you know, direct her hours towards. And if there was something that came through committee, it could also be something that could come through one of the council committees that needs some administrative support, and it could come through the departments as well. But we don't have a work list, per se, right now, other than those couple of things that I mentioned.
Well, I guess I just needed a little clarification because of our Personnel meeting, you know, when we kind of, I thought, worked through basically that evening, well, the relationship between French Renneker and the city, et cetera, et cetera. But then it sounds like things have changed somewhat.
Yeah, I think maybe we weren't clear enough that night, because for that Personnel Committee meeting, because this was always the intention. You know, the projects that are ongoing would continue to be ongoing, funded by that project source. These would be extra details that, and, you know, I think the point is that this is the way our last city administrator did use Melanie's services a lot of times, just for incidental things that are outside of project scopes, to do a lot of those things. So a lot of that was being done already. And the other thing is, we did have, we do have a line item that is budgeted for those kinds of ancillary engineering services, not those that are tied to the project. So there is some funding support already in our budget for this model. But it is outside. It is outside of the engineering projects.
Oh, sorry. Just clearing my throat.
I think that this is a little bit challenging, because it's not an ideal situation, and we weighed a lot of those things in the Ways and Means meeting, the pros and cons, but this seems to make the most sense as far as what the mayor mentioned, as far as continuity of projects. But I personally am more comfortable with the ideal situation of a capable city administrator to handle these sort of things, and I think, in my opinion, we should start that search as soon as possible. I think Melanie's professional and can handle a lot of things, but not some of the things that you addressed, as far as personnel issues or leadership for our departments that need to be in place, so.
Well, it states in the agreement, tasks not included are, A, supervision and evaluation of city staff, B, authorization of purchases, C, drafting city policies, ordinances, resolution. Those are pretty important issues that we need an administrator to handle, so I'm not comfortable accepting this without moving forward on finding ourselves a competent administrator. And it's great to have continuity. We do have a lot of capital improvement projects going, but there's more to administration than capital improvement. There's more to administration than, no offense, an engineer can bring to the table. So the sooner we get that search started, the sooner we find that right person who's a good fit for our community, and start the process of bringing that person up to speed. So I view this more as a temporary, important, temporary action and agreement. That's what I'm comfortable with, at least.
And I agree with you, Michael, on that. I see it as very temporary. That would be my ideal situation.
And with the two-week notice of termination, the contract, that puts it in, when we do find someone to fill that administrator's position, we can have that two-week overlap. Once we know a person has accepted it, then we can put in our two-week notice and then begin that from the time that person comes on board until two weeks is up, and then the contract's done with. It's not something that's guaranteed for an entire year. I think that we've put a good enough safety net into place for that. I'm hoping that we can find someone a lot sooner, but I understand the constraints that we're under with the budget that we have, and this is a better agreement, I feel, than the one that was initially proposed.
I will also say that, you know, I did have hesitations about this, especially about the number of hours. And so I'm really glad that kind of everyone came to this feeling that maybe we could do it in 60 instead of 80 hours a month. And so I feel a lot more comfortable with that. I like the idea in general, and I like Melanie a lot. I think it's going to be a great asset, having her in this role. But also, you know, when I... But also, you know, when I voted as part of Ways and Means to recommend this, my comment as well was, and I think we should go sooner than later for the search. So I know the mayor's suggestion was wait till September to do the search, but-
I think it's up to Personnel Committee, and I spoke with Doug briefly about it. He couldn't be here tonight, but he can call a meeting, and you're going to have that discussion about when you'd like to start.
Okay. Doug who?
The guy's associate. It's the next one.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Sorry, Doug.
One other point.
John's been in that scene a while. He was thinking maybe Connie Boyer was still there. I don't know.
I was thinking that Kevin sat here.
Doug who? Don't miss a council meeting because John will forget you. All right.
One other point I just wanted to-
Tony turned red just on my behalf.
All right. Since I've been in the council since 2010, there have been many months of that time that we've been without an administrator. When I first started, we were without an administrator, and then between the guy we hired and the second guy that we were without, and now here we are again. And I know that a lot of the responsibilities fall on Joy's shoulders, so I just want to make sure, funding-wise, if we're going to spend this money for additional engineering services, we set something aside to compensate Joy for the extra load that she will undoubtedly take on, has historically taken on, and will once again take on while we're without an administrator. So I just want to-
Michael-
-go to bat for my friend Joy and be responsible and take care of someone who's been in that position a long time.
I agree with you, Michael. We did consider that at our Ways and Means meeting as well, which is sort of kind of, my report has been kind of combined with this, considering this proposal, but-
We're going to bring something back at the first meeting in June, I think.
Yeah, there was some feeling that we were-
Ways and Means was going to meet again on this, so.
Yeah. But it is under discussion. All right, I will just say that. Good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so is there wish to move this forward?
I would move to approve this agreement with French Reniker.
Okay, move by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? Now please call roll.
Can we, is it possible you would amend your motion to include that we will move forward on the search for a new administrator sooner than September?
I think that that has to go through the Personnel Committee first. I wouldn't feel comfortable in saying that for them. At this point in time, I only see just the agreement that we have, and it's not part of the agreement per se, so.
An agreement doesn't begin until July 1.
At this point?
I wouldn't make an amendment to my motion for that.
Thanks for considering.
Okay. Any other discussion? Now please call roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. Next, we have the, John, is there anything else from Ways and Means?
No, I did enough.
All right. Water Sew Utilities Committee.
Again, we met this evening at 6 o'clock prior to the council meeting tonight. The only remaining item that we have not discussed was a, we had a request for a reduction in sewer from a citizen. There was an inadvertent accident by children that left a hose on at their house. The average monthly bill for the sewer portion only at the property is $45.46. The bill that was in question, the sewer portion, was $125.42. And with direction from Sean and agreement from the committee, we will credit back to this property owner a total of $79.96, which is the difference between the $45 and the $125, to their account. And it will be done as a credit to the account as we typically do this type of refund.
Darren, I'm sorry, you're crediting the water amount and not the sewer?
No.
You're crediting the sewer and not the water?
Not the water. The water was used. It's on the ground.
That's fair.
And again, we're only forgiving the difference between what the average bill is of approximately $45 and what the overage was in the sewer only of $125 for a total reimbursement of $79.96, which would be a credit to the account.
Okay. And I'll take that as a motion to approve-
Yes, sir.
-the rebate.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. And final item on our agenda would be a project report. Melanie, do you just want to take any questions or, yeah, okay.
I have nothing specific to draw your attention to.
Okay. Melanie did provide a report on projects that she's been working on. Any discussion on those, council? My document's not opening.
No, I've reviewed the report, and it's very comprehensive. I mean, there are a lot of capital improvement projects going on right now in the city of Fairfield, and Melanie and French Reniker has done a tremendous job with keeping track of what's going on and making sure that payments are made to contractors when they need to be made and that the drawdowns are through the city hall here as they should be. I'd also like to say thank you to McClure Engineering for the work that they've done on our biggest capital improvement project out at the treatment plant and the work that they're doing and that they're going to continue to do for us.
And while we're thanking people, we can't forget your department heads because they're very helpful in getting these projects out, especially when I need one call and other things like that. They've been very helpful.
Great. Thank you, Melanie. We appreciate the synopsis as well. Very, it is very comprehensive and assures us that we are still on task and moving forward. Any other business before the council this evening? Now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.